It's less than a minute.
I'm starting to get nervous. I was gonna sit on the start of the party for now.
Where's my, uh, what happened to my agenda? I was sitting here. Oh, there it is. Okay. Let's call the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session to Order. We're in the Assembly Chambers. It's Thursday, June 30th, 2022, 6:30 PM. We will start with citizens' comments, but you should know that your comments will not be part of the official record as the work sessions are not official in that respect. And so you should come next week, next Thursday, July 7th, if you have something you wish to be on the record. We're more than glad to listen to you more than once. So we'll open it up to citizens' comments. If you're calling in, it's 1-907-486-3231 or toll-free 1-855-492-9202. If you're here, please sign in. In both cases, state your name clearly so that we know who we're speaking with. And if you're calling in, please turn off your listening device so we don't get feedback and we can't hear you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Robertson, Assembly. My name is Julie Kavanaugh, and I'm speaking tonight about public access to Fossil Beach and the Passag Shack Peninsula. For over two months, the Borough Road to Fossil Beach has been closed. These closures have no authorization or memorandum of understanding with the Borough, thus making these closures fairly disingenuous at best. My understanding is the Pacific Spaceport Complex has a new customer. The rocket has been placed above Fossil Beach, and they are doing live testing. For public safety, they are shutting that area down. This hasn't triggered a waterway closure or a FAA airspace closure notice, just closure to land use in the vicinity. It's a bit, it's a bit to unpack verbally, and you might be wondering what the concern is if it is just to keep the public safe. Well, first of all, the spaceport went through about an 18-month public process to develop their 2020 to 2030 master plan. An advisory committee, which included the previous Borough Mayor and other representatives from our community, were involved. Access to Fossil Beach and the surrounding areas was one of the major community concerns. Assurances that the spaceport would keep closures to a minimum and allow maximum access were agreed to. The community was told that the closures would be as short as possible, and launch windows would be approximately three to five days with possible extensions, but that, but also the conversation included that launch windows were self-limiting. Over the last two-plus months, advertised daily 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM closures have effectively shut down access. A 45-mile drive from town does not lend itself to a simple hour or two stay at the beach. People go to Fossil Beach because they want to go at low tide and look for things. They want to picnic, they want to build a fire, they want to camp overnight, hike, swim, collect fossils, explore bunkers, ride bikes, ride horses, collect firewood, and watch whales. These are only a few of the things that people go to do at Fossil Beach. There are very few recreational areas on the road system that don't require a permit. Fossil Beach and Passag Shack area is one of those. I do have some updates. I spoke to an employee of the spaceport today. They're looking at getting new road signs that can be updated from a cellphone, which will be helpful because the daily closures from 9:00 to 6:00 did not reflect the time of the closures. Sometimes they weren't closed that day, sometimes they were closed for an hour, sometimes it was once a week but not all week. And sometime, and so those signs, I'm encouraged to hear that those signs may be being purchased, and also that they're going to try to do a better job on their info hotline, the information hotline that you can call. It's a vague message that doesn't really give you much information, and they're, they told me they intend to try to make that better. But I would like to ask the Assembly to invite a representative of the Pacific
Go ahead.
Pacific Spaceport Complex to a work session, maybe introduce them and their new leadership to you, discuss their commitment to public access, talk about road closures and noticing, consider what conditions the Borough, what, under what conditions the Borough portion of the road can be closed, discuss how future changes in operations where they have to restrict public asset, access is affected and how it should be handled. And my final request is maybe to develop a memorandum of understanding between the Borough and the spaceport so that you guys know what's going on. They don't have to apply for permits or land use things or building permits, and that's one of the reasons why you don't know what's going on out there. They can, they're basically just carte blanche, doing what they want to, and they don't have a reason to tell you anything if they don't want to. If that doesn't work, I would appreciate it if the Borough would consider involving themselves in their process that the spaceport is going to be doing over the next year, updating their ILMA, which is an inter-agency land management agreement with the state DNR office. And maybe, and by doing that, you would intend to formally describe the expectations concerning public access. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have any call-ins?
Good evening. My name is Dan Rohr, Mayor and Assembly. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I've got two topics I want to talk to. One of them is the same as Ms. Kavanaugh. As the previous Borough Mayor, I spent a lot of time with Pacific Spaceport Kodiak, with specifically with Mark Lester and Craig Campbell discussing ways to interact positively with local community. And one of the big things we discussed was, as contractors come from off-island, of course, they ask for the moon, sorry, no pun intended. And when, you know, it would be easy to just say, oh, yeah, sure, do whatever you want. And what we discussed is that for the benefit of the community, you have to do that within parameters. So they, during their master planning process, there's areas that would have been great to build launch pads on if you weren't thinking about public access, but we took those off the list so that a potential launch complex customer would see that as kind of an out-of-bounds area. One of the other things that we talked about was timing of launches. So you have people coming from multiple time zones away, they're already changing their, their time clock, internal time clocks. Why do they have to work banker's hours? Why do they have to work from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday? Why can't they work weekends? Why can't they work from 5:00 till 1:00 in the morning this time of year? And so for a year period, the rocket launch facility did that. Now, not all their customers love that, but for the type of orbits they want, this is the only place they can launch from. So the reality is, is that the customer worked with them, and we had very, very, very limited closures. The past practice was to just say, oh, sure, we'll close the road like they did this time, where they just advertised 9:00 to 6:00 every day for this extended long period of time. If that was all private property, where they gated it at the beginning, sure, that would be an easy way to do it, but that's not what they're working with. So I think it's time probably for the Borough to just write a letter as a reminder to them that they are on public property, they're on state lands, and this is what we've worked through in the past to come to something that was equally acceptable and unacceptable to everybody. So there was a lot of give and take in that process, and my concern is with Mark Lester and Craig Campbell both not there anymore, I'm concerned that some of those agreements, albeit a lot of them were verbal agreements, but they worked. They worked very well. That history may be lost. Rob Green's no longer there. There's a lot of, been a lot of transition, and I'm concerned that some of that's just been forgotten. So in the last 30 seconds, I did notice on your agenda that you're discussing codes pertaining to the Emergency Services Council and the Emergency Services Organizations. I have tons of thoughts on it, but there's one that I think we have to add, and that is the idea that the Emergency Services Council, that the director of it can declare an emergency, but there's a timeframe on how long that emergency can be declared before you, the elected officials from Kodiak, Alaska, basically approve it. So right now, the Emergency Services Director can declare an emergency, and then immediately the Council, the Emergency Services Council, has to approve that, and that's just in case all of us were not available. But over the last couple of years, you guys met every single Thursday night and were never asked if you wanted to continue it. So my thought is, is that there be a very short period of time that at the next available meeting of the Assembly, the Assembly would need to vote to basically approve the emergency that's been declared. And that way, it, an emergency still remains answerable to the community, the community people that have elected you. So anyways, again, thank you, appreciate your time on both topics. I'm looking forward to hearing your discussion. Thanks.
And don't forget, August is when you sign up for running for office. Any other comments? Any phone calls? Seeing none, we will move on to our agenda tonight. We have a number of things to talk about, and the first one up there is pertaining to the Emergency Services Council and the EOC and all our regulations. And you, you have in your packet, you have the end of, well, it wasn't quite the end of the, the emergency, but they did a look back, and you got some of the things that were discussed. I noticed there are things in there that I discussed that didn't make the cut. This needs to be done in conjunction with the city council because we are both partners in this, and we both have to have similar codes. They have to kind of reflect each other. So tonight, I just wanted to bring it up to see which directions you want to go. I know the first direction is what Dan was talking about, putting a limit on it, having the Assembly be able to come back after so many days and extend it or not, from our perspective. So I will open it to the floor for discussion, and then we will look at sometime, I think the city's off all of July? They take a big break in the summer, but we can meet in late summer, early fall and finalize this. Scott?
Yeah, I would just share that I spoke with Pat Branson, and she said September would be a good time for a joint work session, which would give us some time to go through and make a list of what we think needs to be changed, as we've heard and you've experienced being on there.
Yeah, and you, and you guys have the copies of all the stuff. If that's what you want to do, then we'll put this to bed early tonight, and everybody can submit their lists, and we'll kind of put it in one format, and then we'll have, have a meeting, and I'll tell you what, my personal reactions to some of the things that happened and what I thought needed to be fixed. And then we can get that ready for the general meeting. That's if nobody wants to dig into it tonight, which, Scott Smiley.
I just had a couple of questions about it. The chief of police is not on the list, and the operating official is the, is the fire chief. Is that dependent on personalities in the past, or why not the police and why the fire? Or is the new fire chief going to have that responsibility? Or do we make any decisions on that?
I think the fire chief is EOC, but Dave?
Well, primarily, the fire chief is normally that position because of the training with the incident command system, where the police don't necessarily operate under that system. So with your various federal codes for meeting, the qualifications and the training involved, that's, it's more on the fire realm. Incident command system training came from the fire service, so there's a bit of tradition there.
And there's a reason that the police chief isn't on the committee?
He has a gun. I don't know.
He has a gun, he should be on the committee.
I'm not sure he's not on the ESE. He was there almost every meeting.
He's not listed in the thing.
Okay, I should read it a little closer. I know the state, the head of the state garrison here is on the ESE, and both commanders, the air base commander and the base commander are on it, and then both mayors and both managers. And I thought the police chief was too. Well, you can tell me.
The police chief and the fire chief are not on the Emergency Services Committee. The Emergency Services Committee is established in code. It mirrors each other in the, both the city and the Borough code. In this incident, the fire chief was the, excuse my phone, the incident commander, and that may vary depending on who is available and trained to respond to the incident. The fire chief and, I mean, excuse me, the police chief was an advisor and did sit in on many of the conversations to provide the public safety perspective.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Thanks.
So do we want to do that? You guys take this and make homework out of it. We should have a meeting ourselves in, in August and discuss it before we go to a Yeah, work session, before we go to a joint session. So we'll put it on August. I'll sit down with Nova next Tuesday or whenever we're supposed to sit down, and we'll put it on the calendar. But that means you have to do your homework so that when we get together. Right now, I was looking at him going, okay, we got the data, but no one's really had time to sit and discuss it and write down, except for maybe Scott or Amy.
I'm like, I already did my homework. May I?
Sure.
So just real quick, and like, I won't force us to go into discussion on this, even though I think we should. The, in the city code, they have a specific 2.32.055 that it's mayoral orders during a declared disaster that we do not have. So as we're doing our homework, I'd like, like, please pay special attention to that. That is not in Borough code. Like, it almost mirrors each other except for that part. It's a little bit confusing just because our font is different and so much bigger, so it's hard to get the pages to match up. But when you're going through, you'll see that the city has added in a section that we don't have that I think that we should have, and that will cover a lot of our teleconferencing participation via phone or Zoom or whatever. I think we can put in that section that we've been discussing in previous meetings. That'll give us a place to do that on what the mayor's powers are to declare that.
What's the citing?
It's, so in the city emergency services, it's page four or five of what's in your packet, but it's 2.32.055. I just think that's a good place for us to start looking and be able to, it gives the city mayor the power to modify our wave code provisions as applicable to the emergency, and I think that would give us the flexibility that we're looking for in how we attend our own meetings and stuff like that. That would be the place, if we added that in, that would give the mayor the flexibility they need as we move forward. That's all.
I didn't mean to say we couldn't discuss this tonight. We can. We can do it tonight. But I was wondering if everybody here is prepared. Yeah, so that's up to the Assembly. I know that if we want to get into it line by line tonight, or we want to do that on our own and then bring it back and hammer it out. It's up, up to the Assembly. What's the pleasure? So you move on? Okay. It was put on there actually when we looked at it way back when, when we first started on that ordinance with teleconferencing, and I said to the clerk, and we have a clerk that really listens, I said, let's put it on sometime the end of June. Well, here it is. And that's why it's there. Okay, so let's go on to discuss and respond to questions from the consolidation committee. You saw on there the consolidation committee had some questions they would like answers to. One of is policing for the whole, whole road system or out, how do you want to handle policing? And the other part was road maintenance, I believe. Is that right? I'll turn it over to you, James.
Yeah, that's correct. So basically, there were a few questions that we talked about in our last meeting, and I thought I'd bring it to you to bring to the Assembly if you wanted to, and it, and we have. So basically, I, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about all of these things. We've been talking about this for years. Policing, road system maintenance, you know, do we want to, if, if it is a consolidated city-borough, do we want to have Public Works in charge of all Borough roads? Or do we just want to have what's basically status quo? Do we want to have policing status quo, or do we want to spread that out? You know, there's a lot of talk of just districts or broadening it all the way out to Chinniac and Passag Shack, you know? So there's, there's a lot of unanswered questions that I think in the, in the broadest discussion that we have during these monthly meetings, we should probably have some input from how the Assembly sees it going, instead of just the committee trying to assume that that's where everybody wants to go. And I know, I know that part of the original discussion back in 17 was leaving policing the way it is, leaving the road service districts the way that they are. And that's the way, the direction that this has been basically going. But I think that the Assembly kind of needs to have some input on this, and then we can go from there. And then any other discussion that the Assembly wants to have other than those basic items.
Did you guys ever talk about doing an elected sheriff? Like, some of the big counties down in Wyoming and places like that, the Dakotas, Montana, there's some pretty huge counties that are covered by a sheriff's department, and usually it's an elected sheriff, and he hires deputies, however many he thinks he needs. Did you guys discuss any of that, or was it basically status quo or everything?
Basically, status quo. We've, we've discussed expanding it to, similar to a sheriff's department. But again, it, it's the, the way that the board had decided to just go ahead and stay status quo for now, and then let the, let the public decide after the, if the consolidation went through with, with the vote of the people, then when we're moving forward, let the public decide on policing powers.
Anybody on the Assembly have anything to tune in on that, other than, oh, Scott?
Or other than, somebody else could speak.
No, go ahead.
First, in the past, part of, when we've had some of the discussion on that, I call it the Girdwood Syndrome, but where Girdwood is part of the municipality of Anchorage, but chose not to do the policing part because they had the troopers. And then they would have got a much better deal if they'd have taken it to begin with. But once the decision was made, they paid very dearly to get the Anchorage Police Department to respond because the troopers have pulled out. And then, and part of my concern is that that will happen here, too. You know, in a, in a perfect world, I would say that probably dead man's curve just above Gibson Cove north, everything north would have police by the, by the government, and then the troopers, and then you have the military police on the Coast Guard Base there. But I don't know that that would hold up very long before the troopers would pull out of the road system here completely and only handle the outlying communities from here. And then also how consolidation on an island-wide basis potentially screws that up, too. There's, that's one of my concerns, that that'll get screwed up, too. So anyway, those are some of my thoughts, but I'm very concerned about, status quo doesn't work for me at all because I just don't see that working. That'll just facilitate the troopers pulling out of here quicker on it. So those are my thoughts.
Scott Smiley?
I don't remember all the details, but there was a woman who came down from the Boundary Commission, which will have to review the plan for consolidation. I was under the assumption that all the villages had to contribute in this, too, because the consolidation would subsume them as well. And then you run into the issue of policing in the villages and all the coordination that has to occur when the Borough Government then becomes the government largely for the villages as well. And I think the issue that came up at that time about policing was that Dunleavy would close the trooper operation here, and we would be in need of a lot of new policing, and that would be very, very expensive. But I think the way Anchorage did it was what one of the Assembly members at the time thought was the right way to go. But Mr. Arndt has pointed out some of the details with that.
Anybody else? Joe?
I wonder how that policing
I wonder how that policing in the villages would go. I mean, right now, some of them have VPSOs. And that's my experience when they're there, they work pretty well, but my God, some of the calls, they have to be on call all the time. And I, I can speak for Yezinki, we're right next to Kodiak. And I am amazed at how much traffic there is in that realm. It's disappointing, but I imagine the other villages might, maybe the same, I'm not sure. So I don't know how you can make it better. VPSOs in the villages are important, and I don't know how you would replace that. But I'm certainly interested to see the different ideas that might come up. Now that Mr. Arndt brought that up, I'm starting to wonder more. So I'll, I'll think more about this, and maybe it's time to start attending those consolidation committee meetings again.
What was the final decision on the villages, the second-class villages? They were going to keep their own autonomy, I believe was what was discussed.
That's, that's the way it was originally, but that doesn't mean we can't change the discussion.
Anybody else have any input for the consolidation committee on which way to go, Amy?
Thank you. Can I ask Mr. Turner a question via you, sir?
You can ask him, sure.
So I'm just asking for a quick catch-up on, I know the consolidation committee wasn't able to meet because we couldn't make a quorum, right? So the mayor appointed Mr. Neff to the consolidation committee so you could get enough people to make a quorum, and obviously, that happened. That's good. I thought that one of the first things we were going to address and bring back to the assembly was the, the future of that consolidation committee, and if that was still the correct direction to go. Now, I missed a couple of meetings. Did I, did that come back to the assembly and we talked about that? Or have we, is that something that's still on the table for us to talk about?
Well, the consolidation committee was formed to come up with a discussion, that they, to, to look into the probability and possibility of consolidation and give a report back to the governing bodies. And they have not given a report back. It's drug on for a number of reasons, and I'm not going to get into some of them tonight. It won't do us any good. But I think right now what the committee's, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, what the committee's looking to do is to tie it up, but they have some things hanging out there they want to know about, and these are two of them, Public Works and the policing. From my, my first reaction was let it stand as it was, but then Scott reminded me about Girdwood. And yeah, the troopers would pull out of here, and we'd have a problem. So I don't think with policing that that would be good. I think we could have service districts, just like we do now. The city could have its own service district. Go ahead.
Yeah, so there's been, like I said, originally, it was leave the policing and road systems the way that they are. But there's been a lot of discussion, you know, we've, we've gone over and over and over this stuff because of different people on the, on the group. But, you know, I mean, we basically revisited everything multiple times just to keep, just to catch people up on, on some of this stuff. So it's been taking a long time because we haven't had a solid quorum. And so we're basically back on that topic at this point. There's been two different ways to look at it. You know, one is leaving it status quo, and one is broadening it all the way out, the entire road system. We, we haven't discussed a limited road system, as, as Mr. Arndt had just suggested. We've, it's either the entire road system or stay status quo. And so that is the biggest question that we have, is where does the assembly see that going? Do, do we see it, number one, as staying status quo until the people vote on it? Or do we see it broadened and then have the people vote on it? Or, and then road system maintenance, you know? Do we see staying in districts, or do we see Public Works taking over the entire operation on, on, in all the districts? So it sounds more like everybody wants road system policing, for the most part, to me. Public Works hasn't been really discussed. It's just been policing over the last couple of questions, or the last couple of statements. But to answer Ms. Williams' question is, yes, that was supposed to be what we were supposed to be looking at, but we've been trying to catch Mr. Neff up so that we can basically come to that conclusion. And that the plan is to come back to you and say, you know, we, we don't think it's going to work, or we think it's going to work. And these are some of the questions that we have to have answered by the assembly, which direction they'd like us to go in order to make that conclusion.
You know, on, on the road service, it'd be interesting to know, if you look at all the taxes collected for the road service districts, and you threw them in with what the city is currently spending on their public works, if that would be enough to expand it. And I'd be surprised, but it might. Joe?
My original thoughts before the sheriffing came up was about the road service thing. And I'm wondering how effective it is right now for, as far as road maintenance. And if there's, I just really don't know. I, I did some of that for a time in Yezinki, so I know some of the problems that you encounter in maintaining roads and stuff. So I'd like to know how effective the road maintenance stuff is going as it is, and how we can find ways to make it better if there are. I think that's my, my biggest question.
Well, I'm in Service District One. Way the hecking gone at the end of Service District One. And the roads are well-maintained. And it's usually not a problem. The only road that's a problem is Otmaloy, and that's a state road. It's not Service District One territory. I think they're doing a good job.
Scott?
Not that you didn't want to say that. Sounds better coming from you.
Did I just see some green bucks pass underneath the table there?
One of the things that Service District concept does is each service area board is made up of residents of that area. And they're determining what level of service they wish to pay for. So there's always a benefit there. So there's, you know, so Service District One, we got a lot of city slickers. So we have to provide a more expensive, higher level of service on there. Now, Women's Bay, where I get the most complaints, you know, what do we do about this? You know, they're just atrocious out there. They said, you got to call your service district chair and the members on the board and voice your concerns to them. So it's, you know, you'll see that there's a different level of service that goes on in the different districts. But in the wintertime, you know, and I know Dave gets a lot of calls. I get calls about the Menosha Bay. I get the troopers calling typically saying, we got a problem at this intersection. And I'll say, this is who you need to call. It's outside of Service District One on there. And sometimes it is Service District One. But in the wintertime, as we all know, it's very hard to be everywhere at one time. You know, when it's especially, everything's, you got snow and ice, and it starts raining, and everything starts falling apart very quickly. But we, we try to do the best we can. But what I'm seeing, James is asking, what do we do about that? He's asking for districts for road maintenance or Public Works. I think it becomes a hybrid of it. There are certain things that a staffed department, being Public Works, can do. But in the wintertime, there is no way they can provide service to everywhere. They barely have enough graders for their own roads. So you're going to have to contract out for some of those services. Because, you know, there, there are some times when it snows on the north end, and we get six inches, and Bell's Flats gets a dusting, and sometimes directly the opposite. It's just really unpredictable. But then there are those times we all get nailed at the same time. So I, I would, I would say it would end up being a hybrid combination. So that's my thoughts.
Let's let Mr. Conrad chime in, then Amy.
So having been on a service area board for over 30 years, the biggest problem I believe you have is microclimates, which is basically what Scott just said. And if you don't have someone that is directly in the service area, you have a, a, whatever person is in charge of a city type, that person better never go to sleep in the winter. And you have to react differently, and I, I agree with Mr. What, what Mr. Arndt said is, you know, last year, a majority of the funds spent in Women's Bay was because of ice control. And I think that was most areas. But the other thing is empowering these people and maybe educating them more on boards so that they know how to anticipate and maybe save some money. On the same note, for the past 30 years, I've been hearing from the borough staff, don't worry, there's going to be transportation bonds. Don't worry, there's going to be this. Well, if that doesn't follow through, and borough staff isn't there to, to apply for these, these grants and stuff. So I'm not sure that a hybrid will work, but I sure think you could tune up what's there, and it would work.
Amy?
So I'm going to try to summarize. So you have planning direction, right? So most of this stuff is going to have to get voted on by the public anyways for these individual details. So for planning purposes, it makes sense to me just to keep it status quo. And then when the public votes later, they can change things then. So for planning, so you guys can get to a, a decision of whether or not consolidation is viable or not, I would say just go with status quo stuff. Because, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the direction is just viability, not like every thought-out minutia part of the plan, right? Or are you going all the way to the Boundary Commission with a request? And is that what the, like, I don't remember that's what the ballot was asking for. I thought it was just to assess viability and if we should pursue it. But you, I mean, if you are going all the way to Boundary Commission, then you do need all of these details. So that I just, I guess I'm in that gray area of understanding how detailed you need to get before you can reach what the ballot initiative said. Because it seems to me that we're way past what the ballot initiative said, and that we are now, like, developing the plan. And if that's, like, I wasn't on the assembly when that happened, so someone's going to have to teach me. Scott, Scott, Scott's willing to. That's good. But it seems to me like just status quo, because those are numbers you can actually grasp and understand without having to try to guess what it would look like, would be, make most sense for planning. But, because that's, we have historical figures on how much it costs and how we could do it. So that seems the easiest route out of that one.
Scott's smiling.
Well, the charge to the committee when it was formed was to prepare the proposal for the Boundary Commission. And the idea of having votes, if you're going to try to fill in the, the, the lack of knowledge with votes from the public before the Boundary Commission, I don't think that'll fly. I think you have to do the Boundary Commission first, but that's just my take.
James?
So to answer that few questions that you ants asked, yes, the, the ballot initiative was, is it viable? That's what, that's what we were tasked with. But the, when the, when the committee was formed, the mayor at the time gave directive to make a package deal. So basically, put together a package and, so that we can present to the Boundary Commission and put it on a ballot. And that's, that's what was tasked for the committee. Now, that doesn't mean that that's the direction that we still have to go, because it has taken so long to get to where we're at. Basically, there's a budget. There is a code that is put together. What, the details of the code, the details of the budget, like these particular items, are what need to be answered before we get any further. A lot of the questionnaire for the Boundary Commission can be relatively filled out. But it would be a lot, a lot better if we had an assessment done, just like the city did for, for annexation. What that costs is somewhere between 25 and 35, I think. So it's, it's not a cheap deal. But the, you know, the committee can't go out and just do that. It would have to come to the assembly, and the, and then staff would have to request one. I, I do know that there's a lot of people willing to do those things. But it, it is not going to be relatively inexpensive. So, and that would answer a lot more questions if we did that. It, it wouldn't put together the whole package, but it would answer a lot more questions, whether or not it's going to be fiscally responsible to do it.
So maybe we should do that. Scott's saying no, but uh...
Well...
As Amy would say, you're just one of seven, Scott.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's up to the rest of the assembly. I, you know, I'm just one person. I, that's what I think it should be, but I'll stop.
Okay. Scott's smiling.
Where to go with this? I think if you're going to give, set it up for a vote from the populace, you're going to need to have numbers, a real financial cost of doing things. The idea of replacing the troopers is something that's going to be expensive. I don't think that Ms. Williams' remark, that you go with the simple, straightforward, status quo thing, would encompass that, and therefore, you're not telling, you're not offering to the electorate all of the financial facts that might be involved. So I think you need to have those kinds of numbers in order to do it. And I'm in favor of having someone look it over. I think that's a good idea. An analysis, like you said, about annexation, I think that's a good idea. Even, even if it costs 25 or 35,000?
Scott, I know you're busting at the seams there. Go ahead.
I'm not in favor of spending the money, because I've gone through the information that the city got from their study that they bought. And it's garbage in and garbage out. That's what came out of it. So it's a total waste of money of what they got on there. Especially when the consulting firm chose not to talk to any of the service districts, as to how we operate, that they're looking at taking over. And then you have a city fire chief that determines, in order to integrate Fire District One, Bayside Fire Station, it's going to take 10 paid people on there. So like I said, garbage in, garbage out. What, you know, and I can, I can go on, because on the, on the Service District One road maintenance on there, they didn't look at that right, and they show quite a bit more money to operate that. Then when they went to, the only thing that was accurate in there was the police protection for Service District One, what that was going to cost. Chief Putney detailed that very well, and I give him credit for that. But the fire chief... But the fire chief did a very poor job. And Public Works Director did a very poor job on there. And then the company did a very poor job on their own when they go, okay, just because we're adding more people, you're gonna have to add additional administration staff. In Service District One, the city already has the sewer and water. And they have the collection for that. There is no additional staffing that needs to be done for that. You know, so it just kept adding. And it was, it was one of the worst investigations I've seen in the fifty years I've seen the Kodiak Island Borough look at consolidation. So I'm not in favor of spending the money, for fear that we get garbage back, like the city got on theirs. And one of the, one of the things that I said they touched on in the annexation report was combining the fire service, Fire Service One, with the city of Kodiak. And that was going to take ten additional people, total of ten. We have one paid position right now, and then volunteers. So I think that one of the options needs to be disbanding, because it was never on the ballot to proceed with a petition for consolidation to the Boundary Commission. That was not the question on the ballot. And we've expanded this so far, and we've been dicking around with it for years. I'm of the point that we need to basically sunset this organization.
Dicking around.
So.
Can you say that in a public meeting?
No.
Oh, well, excuse me. Scott, you're blocking language.
Thank you.
Me too.
Both Scots.
Both Scots. Did we help at all, James? Did you get to feel what the majority was saying?
Uh, no. Sort of. It gives us, it gives us a little more input, because I know what I think it should be. I, you know, Jared may have a different opinion. I'm not a voting member unless Jared's not there. So really, I'm, I'm just trying to get some answers so that I can bring it back to the committee, so that they can have better direction. You know? And to, to answer Mr. Arntz's position on the consolidation committee, he's always been against the consolidation committee, so we, we all know that. And, and that's, and that's perfectly fine. There are people that aren't, aren't completely against it still, on the committee. Not as much as before, but there are still people that are staunchly against it. We had, when we originally formed, it was kind of a fifty-fifty split on the committee members. And now, as we've progressed, it has, in, in my mind, it's more of a eighty-twenty. And the more, the more we discuss it, the more, the more meetings that we have, I won't continue with that, but the more, more meetings that we have is swaying more, more members of that committee to, to bring it forward to the assembly as being viable.
Well, I hope we gave you some input that you can use. One thing, maybe making a recommendation to write a resolution to direct staff to put out an RFP for a study. And put a lot of provisos in there, because Scott is right. If you don't give them enough direction, they take the easy way out. Because all they're looking at is, oh, that's a pretty-looking pamphlet, in a lot of cases.
Sorry, I did forget one thing. If I remember correctly, and I can't find my budget, because it's on a flash drive, and I didn't bring it tonight, didn't think we were gonna be talking about budget. But I believe there is a line item in that budget that was approved, that had in the Legislative Section Four, consolidation committee for a assessment. It, it was not twenty-five thousand, but it was, I think it was ten thousand. So I'd have to look it up, and I'm sure that, I don't see Dora anymore. She, she would be able to answer that probably next week or the week after.
Okay.
If it's, if it was in there.
Okay, well, then I think we beat this up enough for this evening. I hope we gave them some good direction. And we'll move on, discussion of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, projects. And that's on there. I've been trying to get that on there for some time, and it's finally on there. Dave didn't know it was gonna be on there, so let's see what he came up with on short notice.
So what I came up with is on eleven-nine twenty-twenty-one, I, as the interim borough manager, put before you the ARPA discussion, which we were asked to do. And in this particular discussion, if my mouse will work, we had identified through the GFA, GFOA, that the revenue replacement calculator required FY six-thirty-two thousand nineteen as a base and calculated eighteen-month reduction of revenue as of twelve-thirty-one through, excuse me, twelve-thirty-one-two thousand twenty, with seven million four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. In round terms, the reductions can be attributed as follows. Five million dollar no-school bond, well, I think we have to re-discuss this and revisit that. Nine hundred and thirty-five thousand less in severance tax, four hundred and three thousand less in interest earnings, four hundred and forty thousand less in solid waste revenues. Staff suggested uses for the first trench of five hundred thousand dollars to the general fund for replace lost revenues. Since this memo, we received another one point nine million dollars through the state for lost revenue replacement. I think the very first step we should do is assign those funds. And I believe that staff can put the figures together to assign those funds, because we need to spend this money. We need to get it going. We've talked about what we would do with this money so many times, we need to just finally do something. Because the faster we commit the funds, the faster we can apply for the second trench on the first one point two-five, if that makes sense. For the first trench, what was recommended was a five hundred thousand dollar, again, sorry, replacement general fund, I did say that. Three hundred thousand for hospital memorandum, memorandum of agreement, designing and planning. I know that KCHC, Carol Osterman, we met with Lisa Murkowski's staff when, when, with the big symposium up in Anchorage. Carol was basically told that they are not allowed to use those funds for planning purposes. So before we pursue this any further, I would suggest we get ahold of AML and talk to those folks and see if that is a viable use of the funds. But I think that, thinking about the future, because the pandemic affected the hospital dramatically, and if we don't have the capacity, then this is the time to use this money to study if that capacity, do we need that capacity? Providence is already looking at how, what, what is medicine gonna look like in fifteen years? So that's part of this discussion. And I have requested square footages from both KCHC and from the hospital. There was a hundred thousand dollars proposed for the tourism, and that would provide approximately two years of regular expenses. Since that, this discussion, we have, stealing my own thunder here, we reopened today the, the touch tank in the aquarium over at KFRC. We need to figure out how to fund that. Forty-five thousand dollars from two thousand seventeen through twenty-twenty, I believe, when the touch tank closed down, was funded from the tourism fund. So we need to, we need to figure out where those monies go, or coming from, excuse me. Seventy-five thousand was suggested for the Chinnyack School Well, which has been an ongoing problem. And I sure hope we decide to put that money, because we've been spending some of it doing planning and design. Eighty thousand, main elementary roof design, well, your main elementary roof is being replaced. So thank you all for tolerating us, but that roof needed to be replaced. And again, it's envelope. We need to worry about the facade and the roof. If that is not viable, then forget it. You're, you're degrading your buildings. Hundred thousand Peterson roof and HVAC design at ninety-five percent. We're almost there. We're ready, we should be ready here within, you know, this month, month of July, to actually sit down with the ARB. Problem we have, we need to discuss as an assembly, is we do not have enough members on the ARB because of resignations. Ninety-five thousand dollars for east roof design, and that is another roof that needs it. So this is what was accounted for, one point two-five million dollars. And I think we need to verify that these are viable projects, bring that back to you, unless you have other projects that you want to insert.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody want to examine that list and see if we wanna pull back some of the money? Or should we just pull the trigger and spend it? They're all good projects, but the only iffy one is the hospital. We may not be able to use that money for that. James, and then Scott.
So if, if, if I can remember all of those line items, so we, what was said, if I remember correctly, was the design and survey of the hospital can, you can't use those funds. But then we talked about design for this, and design for that, and design for this, and design for that. So are any of those gonna be on that list that are gonna be any good? And we have to wait until we get that answer for those items before we can say, you know, pull the trigger. But I'm in favor of going forward with all of those with the ARPA funds. But with the lost revenue, are we including that in those figures? Because you had mentioned both. We started with ARPA, and then you mentioned lost revenue, so I apologize.
No, it's a, I have the same question. So I had mentioned five hundred thousand to do lost revenue, but that was prior to having the one point nine. I think the smart thing to do is to put the one point nine and assign that as lost revenue, because we have absolute direct idea of what that is, and we can assign that with just one resolution, I believe.
So, so with that, I would say that the, part of the lost revenue, I would like to see new vehicles purchased with some of that lost revenue. Now, what we have to take away from that list is my, my question. If, if we're using the ARPA funds for that entire list, and then you have some of that lost revenue left over, we've, we had planned in the original budget, a hundred and sixty thousand in vehicles. That was three vehicles, I believe? Four? So, I mean, if we're talking about a hundred and sixty thousand for four vehicles, a lot of these vehicles are, I mean, some of them are Fred Flintstone-type vehicles at this point, so.
Teslas.
Teslas, okay. Okay. So I think that's time for them to be replaced. And part of, that would be, my opinion is, part of the lost revenue funds would go towards that. And the rest of it, I would agree with, with the ARPA funds if we can.
Do we know if we can, Dave, on some of them?
If I may, we won't be able to directly buy vehicles. So if you can put the money from that into the budget and then do the proper transfer to the account, but as far as direct payment, you can only do emergency vehicles.
Right. So we, we have kinda discussed this, is you put it into the fund that it's supposed to be in, and then the, it has to come to the assembly to transfer those funds back into the, the fund that we're talking about for purchasing the vehicles. One was facilities, and then the other one was general administration. And so you would, you would purchase the vehicles through those funds. And there are some funds already in general administration as contingencies, so it would just be replacing those contingencies, is how I see it. But again, it's all, I'm, I'm not the finance director, and I'm happy that I'm not. So I apologize to Dora for making it difficult.
So we got Scott Smiley, then Scott Arntz, and then Jared. I'm in favor of all of those. Thank you.
First thing, and I, I agree with what Dave's saying, let's look at the, the one point nine million from the state that we got awarded. The breakdown that was given to us by the finance department is one million six hundred and twenty-six thousand of that was the landfill. I still wanted to say dump, but the landfill fund. So to me, you move that money in there. Also, as part of that submittal to the state, there was thirty-some thousand dollars for tourism, directly tourism. Then it started talking about, yeah, we didn't get everything we wanted. We had much larger losses. But I think you start with those two and put the rest of the money into fund balance on there, which we can do for lost revenue on there. That wipes out, let's get the one point nine million off the slate to begin with. Because there's not that much left after you do the tourism and the, and the landfill. Then, on the one million roughly two hundred and fifty thousand, the first trench and then the second trench. On the first trench, you know, I, one of the things I've heard in the past, and also needs to be verified, is we could put that all into lost revenue also, and then move around some of the, the money for, for vehicles and stuff like we've talked about. But you can't purchase those. So, but I'd, I'd like to wipe the, the state money off, because we know exactly what was submitted for losses on, on that. And finance can get that for us again. So, and the biggest recipient of that is the, the landfill. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I'm, I agree, I'm fine with the list, too, as Mr. Smiley said. As we've been talking about process, though, I've been seeing Dora shaking her head, and I didn't know if she had something to say. If we're, if we're getting something wrong, I would very much love to hear your advice.
She's just dropped a stitch, that's why she's shaking.
Oh, okay.
No, just ignore, ignore the person in the back. There's some process problems with what you said, but overall, it, we can, it's, it's not fatal. We can, it just doesn't quite make the leapfrogs you guys were talking about, but that's okay.
Amy.
Thank you. So because we have different funds and different amounts and different tranches, I think what would be helpful to me, and hopefully the rest of the assembly, is the lost revenue from the state, one point nine million dollars. Like, do we have that? How long do we have to spend that? So what I would like to see is like a list, and then when we have to spend it by. So we have gotten the first trench of the ARPA money, and it's in our possession. How, what's the date that we have to have that dedicated by before we're too late and we can't get the second trench? Like, that kind of information? Because when we made that list in November of twenty-twenty-one, I was like, whoa, this is fast! And then I thought it was done, and then it came back and it wasn't done, because we really didn't spend it. And some stuff has changed since then, and some has not. The, I can't speak to the tourism money, because that directly is how I am paid, so I, I will not comment on that. But I think the rest of this stuff, especially the school maintenance stuff and the Chinnyack Well, is, is pretty obvious that that's, we've already done that, and that money is already needing to go that way. we've already done that, and that money is already needing to go that way. So it would be nice to see that in a resolution because we're already spending it. And then the, the general fund, if Dora can work out how we can get the stuff that we talked about in the budget for the new vehicles. And then you asked if there's anything else we would like to see, and I would absolutely like to see that touch tank employee being taken care of for the, uh, for this upcoming fiscal year, because people are very excited about that opening today. So, um, but I would like to just know the date ranges that we're working with so that we don't, I know that money got to us later than it could have, and just make sure that we are in line with, um, I, when we, when we were making the decisions on the first money, I remember Scott Orne saying, oh, we're going too fast, what if we don't have to spend it? And we all looked at him like, you're crazy, we have to spend it. And then like, two days after we spent it, they're like, oh, never mind. So I was like, oh, so I just, like, I want to get stuff done, but I also want to be a little bit cautious. Um, I know that we have a really good feeling about the school bond debt, the money that's coming our way, and that gives us a little more freedom in our decision-making. But I just, um, because there's different funds and different requirements, and I would just like to see the dates of when we have to spend the stuff by and, and how that plays out.
So I can answer one of those many questions and statements. The first tranche was received on October fourth, 2021, and that was one point two six two three five four. Funds are distributed in two tranches, and the second tranche cannot be released until one calendar year after the distribu, the distribu, blah, disbursement of the first tranche. So we can't even think about getting that until October fourth, 2022, which is unfortunately rapidly approaching.
Scott.
Dave, also, you went over the, the list. I'd like a copy of that list again, please. I didn't try and write it all down.
I'll email that to you.
You may email that to the clerk's office, and they'll print it for me. Thank you.
Oh, it's so much fun. Any others discussion on the ARPA money? Have we given you any directions on resolutions we expect to see coming down the line?
I think I know what we're doing next week. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and they may not be resolutions. When Dora gets involved, we may have to do it by ordinance if it involves the budget. Okay, so with that, we are going to go into the review of nonprofit funding applications, and you can see what's there, and we'll ask, uh, Megan if she wishes to tell you what's going on with that, and then we can go on forward.
Good evening, and this is our annual nonprofit funding allocation meeting. It was brought to my attention today that we were missing an application, and so, um, that has been added. You should each have had a paper copy of the application and a revised copy of the Excel spreadsheet in front of you at the beginning of the meeting. I want to thank Amy and, and Pat at the Senior Center for bringing that to my attention. Apologize to them as well that it was missing. I don't know if you've had a chance to think about how you might want to distribute the monies this year. I am going to go sit down over at the clerk's table with Nova, and I am going to open up the Excel spreadsheet on the screen in case you would like to do any manipulating of, of numbers and figures tonight.
That would be good. Scott.
Yeah, Megan, in past years, we've, we've got the spreadsheet handed out with us as to what the organizations kind of got over the last five years. And there wasn't any of that in the packet.
Uh, I have to apologize. I thought that I did include that, so if I picked up the wrong spreadsheet.
All I have is the list of this year's requests.
From, that was hard copy, separate from your packet tonight, or included?
No, it's part of my packet.
Okay, well, I apologize for that.
So that, that always helps to have that, you know, otherwise I'm just looking at one year's in a vacuum.
Would you, if you'd like a couple of minutes to review what's in front of you, I can run down and,
Sure.
Print another Excel, Excel spreadsheet that has that history.
Thank you.
But I don't want to keep you waiting if you don't want to.
I think it's worth, worth waiting for. Take a break. Amy.
What, let's talk about the summer meetings, uh, and then we'll take a break while she's doing that.
While she's doing that?
We'll take a break.
Good, that's the.
We can take a break.
That's too, you're losing, Bill.
I'm usually the one who wants to take the break. What's going on here? You guys get together before the meeting. Okay, let's take a break. Uh, we'll come back in ten minutes, ten of eight. And we are discussing the nonprofits, and we now have our budget of a hundred and seventy thousand. Total ask for two sixty-three, one eighty-eight. And, uh, I'll turn it over to the assembly for discussion. Scott.
Are we gonna stick at one seventy, or are we gonna try to grow it?
Where's the money coming from?
Not me.
General fund lost revenue.
James, we could. You can do anything you want. Just, uh, I don't think Dora packs a gun, so you're, you're good. James, go ahead.
Without, without raising it, uh, any, sticking at the one seventy, if you equally take it down, um, you're decreasing the large ask eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars per ask, and you're decreasing the small ask by twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars to make it to that point. And that's half of the small for most of them. Some of it's a little over.
It's almost half of the large also.
Almost half of the large, almost. But, uh, and on one of them, it puts them down into the small category at that point. So, uh, unless you're gonna decrease, or unless you're going to increase somewhat, then we're gonna have to decrease across the board or deny some of them. And that's quite a bit to deny.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the, the first thing we have to do is, is take a look individually at the large requests, and what we gave them in previous years. And just because they're asking for it, I'm not in favor of increasing the amounts. So I would say we start under the large and go down it line by line and compare with what we've given, and, um, what might be an alternative, or whether they should, we've got some new requests on here, whether they should even be on here. Just a thought, where to start.
That's a good place to start. We look at the, uh, the larger numbers, and we'll just scan down. The first one we come to is Brother Francis Shelter. Last year, um, due to a glitch on their part, they didn't get their application in on time, and they refused to ask for special compensation, so they got nothing. But years prior to that, uh, you can see they were fifteen thousand, which might have been the most we gave that year, and then thirty-six, thirty-four, and forty-three. I think the Brother Francis Shelter is definitely, um, a positive thing in this community. So what, what's the, what's the, Assembly, James?
Uh, I just want to clarify that in twenty nineteen and eighteen, they had, um, a, what, 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 I'm gonna lose my place here. But they basically had a food bank, and they transferred that over to Salvation. And now their, their request is smaller, or at least it was in twenty-one because of that. And then in twenty-two, there was just, uh, I think it was because the director was not in, in town at the time to make that request. And so I think that's why the fluctuation in that. But, uh, as, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's just to clarify that piece, just so everybody else knows.
Well, going down to the next one, it's Kodiak area Native Association WIC program. And they've, they're asking for the twenty-five thousand. In the past, they've gotten three to five thousand. What's the, what's the reason for the large increase on that? Does anybody, do we know? It's not in their application, I don't think.
I don't know.
I don't know.
And then we go down from there, and Kodiak Economic Development Corp., the twenty-four thousand that they've requested through the nonprofit. And then Kodiak Alliance Club, which never requested anything, they're requesting twenty-five thousand. You know, I didn't look at their application to see what they were going to do with it. Because I'm not sure how... All these go in alphabetical order. That's why I was bouncing around all day. All trying to find it here is too... Too laborious. Kodiak. So Alliance Club is ten thousand dollars eye care, three thousand diabetes awareness and aid, and two thousand dollars cancer funds for families in Kodiak by Relay for Life. And then five thousand dollars for rail, rails and ramps, and then bus shelters for three. And we got KMXT at twenty thousand. Kodiak Women's Resource Center at twenty-five thousand. We have the Old Harbor Alliance, which is fifteen thousand. And then Senior Citizens, twenty-five thousand. And how much was the CATS, five thousand?
Yes, five thousand.
Five thousand. So what's the Old Harbor Alliance? They've never gotten funding, although we gave a lot of money to Old Harbor for hoop houses and that through the CARES Act. What is the Old Harbor Alliance? Do we know?
They are requesting funds for food security. They're expanding their local food growing operations.
So what's the desire of the Assembly?
Bill?
Yes.
In the past, on the big-ticket ones, we went with organizations that were dedicated to health and safety in the area. And that included generally Brother Francis, seniors, citizens, and Women's Resource Center. Some of the others, I'm not just not that sure about. Also, there's been in the past significant support for Kodiak KMXT. But with just those four, that adds up to ninety-five, which would fit in a one-seventy budget.
So you would drop the Kodiak Area Native WIC program probably down to where it was before in the five-thousand-dollar range?
Yeah.
And you would drop... What about Kodiak Economic, you'd drop that?
Well, that hasn't... That doesn't have a history either, does it?
No.
No, I don't know. I mean, if you want to stick with a reasonable amount of five-thousand-dollar requests being funded, that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of... Well, ten to twelve of those that are listed. I think there's sixteen total. And if you did that, you could put in one more twenty-five-thousand-dollar one. Of the ones that are up there, I would probably pick Economic Development. I think that'll have the broadest effect. But on the other hand, I wasn't familiar with Lions Club and all the help things they're planning on doing, which sort of... I'm getting overkill on the health and safety stuff. And we got Canna, and we got Kodiak Community Health Center, and now we got Lions Club. The other Scott wants attention.
The other Scott can have attention.
Thanks, Scott, too. I'm not in favor of giving Kodiak Broadcasting twenty thousand dollars on there. What we've been doing in the past was the... The... Let's see, I'll find it there. Okay. Four thousand, and last year was ten thou... The current year, 2022, is ten thousand. And then we had given a bunch of CARES money, too. I'd be in favor of a maximum of ten thousand dollars there. The... I... Brother Francis, I'd put at twenty-five. The WIC, Kodiak Area Native Association, with the WIC program, put back in the five-thousand category. Potentially, the Lions Club, I'd be in favor of looking at them at five thousand dollars. Women's Resource Center, I'd put at twenty-five thousand. Senior Citizen Center at twenty-five thousand. Kodiak Economic Development Corporation, nothing at this time. Like I said, Kodiak Broadcasting at ten thousand. And the Old Harbor Alliance, I got at zero on there.
Okay, anybody want to discuss any of those things? Jared?
I... I think I can get behind with a lot of what Mr. Arnt said. I, um... I would still like to support food security. I do agree that that may not be as clear a connection to borough powers. So I would be in favor of moving Old Harbor Alliance maybe down to the five-thousand level. KMXT was a victim of Dunleavy's vetoes this week. He vetoed one and a half... He vetoed funding specifically for rural public radio stations. Like, specifically just for rural ones. And so they're getting... They're going to get zero state funding because of that veto. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. I'll have to redo the math on that. At the request at the five-thousand level, I cannot get behind... I'm good with just about all of those. I just can't get behind the St. Paul preschool request. I don't think that we should be funding religious education as it states in their... in their mission. And I'm on the fence about camp also because I believe that proselytization is a condition of receiving services with camp. But... So I might need some more information from them with their request. But those are my thoughts right now.
What's the Kodiak Conus Project? I missed that one. Anybody?
It teaches mothers how to nurse.
Ah, okay.
So along with what James was saying earlier, for the total amount requested, when you add camp in, and then the hundred and seventy that we have set aside in the budget, it makes... We have... I love Excel. We have sixty-four point five nine percent of the money that was requested. So if you do a straight reduction for everyone of about thirty-five percent of their funds, you get down to one-seventy. So what that looks like for Brother Francis, instead of twenty-five thousand, it would be sixteen thousand. So all of our twenty-five thousands would go down to sixteen. The Old Harbor Alliance, instead of fifteen thousand, would be just under ten thousand. And then the five-thousand-dollar requests go down to three thousand two hundred and about thirty dollars. So one way to look at it is to honor everyone's requests and give them sixty-five percent of what they requested. And I just, as we sit here, I know that in the past, we've said, these are our top four. We always give them twenty-five thousand. And I just want to suggest that at different points in different people's lives, each one of these is very important. You don't know that you need Kodiak Women's Crisis and Resource Center until someone is stalking your teenage daughter, and you find out that the police can't help you. So you have to go there and get help with your restraining orders. You don't understand how important hospice is until you have an elderly person in your family that needs hospice. We have no idea the food security issues the Old Harbor is trying to fix because we have Safeway, right? And so every single one of these, and especially, I think, with the Old Harbor one, just because we have so few opportunities to reach out to the villages and actually help them, that for me, that's one of the more important ones just because that's such a great program that they have going out there, if you know anything about it. So I find it really hard to be like, nope, can't give it to them because of this, because these people all took the time, and our nonprofits are like one of the best investments we can make. And so I don't have the same feelings about St. Paul and camp. I do understand that, and if that's the pleasure of the Assembly, not to fund religious stuff, I understand that. But I also know what their missions are and how good they do. And so like, that doesn't hurt my feelings too much because it's not a huge amount of money. But I'll go either way on those. But I very much hesitate in like taking any one thing and saying, no, we're not going to do that because we haven't done it in the past, or that's not one of our most important ones. Because for different members of the community, these are all very important.
Scott, smiling.
I just want to throw in a couple of good words about KMXT. If you remember some of the tsunami events that we had, KMXT was all over them and did a terrific job of informing the public about what was going on. And some of the tsunami things were fairly scary, so that was a good thing. We did have a contract, I believe, with the other radio station at the time. But everybody that commented about hearing the news over the radio commented about hearing it on KMXT. I think they're a really worthwhile local group, and I strongly support them.
Joe?
I think I agree with Ms. Williams' take on it. I... But I also am against funding the religious deals. Also, I am in agreement with about the KMXT. I was in the villages during some of those tsunami experiences, and I'll tell you that the KMXT was the easier station to hear. I don't know what the difference was, but it was hard to get KVOK. And KMXT almost had a continuous stream going on with them letting us know exactly what was going on all around the state. So I would keep that where it is. But I think I agree with Ms. Williams for the rest of it.
James?
So in earlier discussions about this, I posed that question about religious entities. And we said that we were going to allow them to apply. So now that we're discussing these numbers, and now we're saying that we don't want to fund these, why did we let them apply in the first place? That contradicts what we voted on before, and we're not supposed to contradict ourselves. So let's stick to what we voted on and discuss those issues. So we can't bring up that we don't want to fund religious. You must fund them. We voted on that, okay? So you can deduct some of that, but you still, we voted on putting them or allowing them to apply for this funding. So second of all, if you, in my opinion... I'll try and keep this straight. Heritage Museum at four thousand. Red Cross at four thousand. Do you want me to hang on a sec for you so that we can all follow along? Brother Francis at fifteen. Hope at four thousand. Hospice at four thousand. Humane Society at four thousand. Camp at four thousand. WIC at four thousand. Arts Council at four thousand. Economic Development at fifteen. Then we're at History Museum at four thousand. Kindness at four thousand. Lions Club at fifteen. Sorry. Did I... Sorry, I forgot you're all over.
So...
Heritage is at four thousand.
Economic Development is...
Economic Development is at fifteen.
Okay, and what was next?
History Museum, I hadn't gotten to yet. History Museum is at four thousand. And then Kindness is at four thousand. Lions Club at fifteen.
Okay.
You're good with that? Maritime Museum is four thousand. I skipped KMXT. I skipped KMXT, so Kodiak Rodeo at 4,000. Soil Conservation at 4,000. Teen Court at 4,000. Women's Resource at 20,000. Old Harbor at 10,000. Rule Cap at 4,000. Senior Citizens is 20,000. St. Paul at 1,200. And then back up to KMXT at 10. What did I miss? Did I miss the WIC?
CAT.
Let's see.
WIC was 4,000.
4,000.
You missed CAT.
Oh, I got that. Okay, so CAT?
I didn't see that on my list.
That's because it was added tonight because I'm...
Put 4,000. Let's see what happens.
Why is that so big? Okay. Sorry.
WIC was supposed to be at 4,000.
Yeah, I moved it down.
Okay. So we moved economic up or down? So that's in there? Yeah, 15,000, okay. Lions Club's in there. So what are we at total now? 165?
Yep.
It's under the 170. Get another 5,000, St. Brothers Francis.
Well, that's discussion.
That's my discussion.
Yeah, there you go.
Anybody agree or disagree with that? I agree with that, okay.
So I'm sorry, excuse me. St. Paul preschool was a...
1,200.
1,200. And Rule Cap was?
Rule Camp was 4,000. Yeah, my number's put me at...
Okay, so your number's...
My number's put me at $200 over.
Yep, I agree. I just missed those.
But I didn't have the, I didn't have CATs in there because I forgot it. So it should be 70,400 over.
70.
120, excuse me, or, excuse me.
200.
4,200 over. So there's...
Something, so I'm off somewhere.
You got Lions Club in there?
They are up top at 15.
Would you, oh, $10 per, okay. All right, well.
Kodiak Economic. I know that's hard to see, but I can expand it and you to see what you wish to.
Bill? Yes, go ahead, Scott.
I think James has got a good starting point there. I don't necessarily agree with all of it, but it's one of those things, you know, that we can, we can discuss it on the floor, too, because, you know, I'm not sure how far you want to go tonight. But, you know, as an example, I'm in favor of raising Brother Francis and lowering Lions Club. I'm in favor of lowering Economic Development Corporation and spending that money around the smaller organizations up to, up to 5,000 on there. It would raise the amount of money that we, we give them, so it spreads it a little farther. So otherwise, I agree with, with a lot of what he's saying there. I just would like to reduce some of the, some more on the larger ones and spread that to the smaller ones. Thank you.
I think this one looks pretty good. I think I would agree with Scott on 5,000 from Kodiak Line Cup up to Brother Francis. I don't agree with him on the closing out the Economic Development. I know he was the one vote against it that killed it in a 3-1 positive vote. So I have a feeling that the majority of the Assembly's not going to agree with Scott on that one. I think that 4,000 for most of those smaller, they're asking five, or some of them are only asking a little over four. I think that's, that's pretty fair. And there's some I would probably drop out, but I don't see any reason for dropping any of them out that they have applied. And James is right. We said let the religious organizations put in, and we did. Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, I understand that, but it very clearly says on the application that we will not fund religious worship instruction or proselytization. And if either of those things are a condition of receiving services, it's, we voted, we did vote. It's right there on the application that says that we will not fund that. And so I, like Mr. Arndt, I can get behind a lot of this proposal here, but I can't get behind funding a religious preschool. So, yeah.
James, you want to?
I can see the point, but then you'd have to take out the Red Cross, you'd have to take out Hospice, you'd have to take out a number of other items on there.
No.
Because they are, they all started out as religious entities.
But they're not proselytizing.
I understand that. That's...
I think that Scott had another good point. Scott, geez, I don't know what's going on with me tonight, but...
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, we've got, this is a good start, and I think we'll bring it to the floor. Everybody cogitate over it. We'll bring it to the floor on the 7th, and we can hammer out the very final details. What I hope nobody will do is start all over. I think we got this, and Megan will print this up and send it out to everybody, then we can make those decisions. We can make our recommendations and have them voted on, and they'll be voted down or up, or how we want to change them.
Can I make one comment?
Amy, you can make all the comments you want.
So when we have organizations fill out this form, we specifically ask them how their mission aligns with the Kodiak and Borough Powers. But we don't ever discuss that. So I think that as we are looking at the amounts and before we come back on Thursday, just take a look on that. I think there's only two that I see that I would question, is it really in line with Borough Powers? But I think that that's something that we should, if we're going to go through the process of the application and ask them to go through the steps of how it aligns with the powers, we should look at it and make sure that our money is going towards something that we have powers over. There's a couple of them in there. I'll let you guys find them. You know, we like to give homework projects, right, Bill? But I just think that that's something that we should look at, because that's how we're supposed to determine how our money goes, and that's the information we've put out to nonprofits. If we're just going to give money to everyone because they applied, then I just want to make sure that we're in line with, with what we're telling nonprofits. Because I think more nonprofits are going to apply if we just give to everybody. And I think less nonprofits will apply if we're following our own direction. So just, if you get a time this week, take a look at that and make sure that they're aligned with the powers. And if you, if no one else brings it up, I'll bring up the ones that I'm concerned about next week. Thanks.
I have a question. When you plan to bring this up next week, are we going to vote individually on each of the applicants?
No. No, what we'll do is we'll present, the way I would do it would be present what James has put forth, and then people can recommend amendments.
Okay.
And we'll vote on the amendments. And when we finish hashing those out, we'll vote on the entirety.
You got the amendment.
Well, okay. Now we'll move on, discuss the, we talked about taking some time off, I think.
Exactly.
Other than the fact that we are now in the midst of trying to hire a new manager. Things should calm down enough. I don't see any really hot items coming up unless Dave sees some on the horizon. And by saying that we are going to cancel a couple of meetings in July, I think give us a break. It's summertime, and I know the city's taking a break, or they normally take a break. And that's why we look at getting back with the city in September on the ordinance for the emergency services. So the original suggestion was we take off the, I think it was the 14th.
The work session on the 14th and a regular meeting on the 21st.
And the regular meeting on the 21st. And so let's put that out there. Can we get behind that? We can call a special meeting if we get some plethora of applications in that we want to look at. Or if, I don't think we'll have enough information on hiring a company to look into hiring a manager for us, or at least finding us some viable candidates until probably two weeks or so. Because we're going to have to put together a contract and RSP and all that good stuff, unless you've already done all that. Dave?
Bill? So there has been three, there have been contractors contacted, and we are expecting next week, is that correct, to have some responses?
That's correct. I actually have received information from two of the three companies already.
So we might have enough information to put it on, up for a vote on the 7th if we want to hire them. Go ahead.
Well, the other option would be to look at the, look at the material and review it, and then just have a special meeting specific to that topic.
Yep. Bill? Be nice to have one at noon. Scott?
Is there a way to see what prior groups felt about their interaction with these three groups, these three companies, so that we can get some feedback about how they operate? Other than their feedback about how they operate? Is that possible to do within the timeframe?
I'll have to look at, I'll have to look into that. What I asked for is their standard brochure or marketing material that I could share with each of you to review. I think that I chose three fairly diverse options.
I wonder if there's, you know, another couple of municipalities in Alaska that have used one or two or three of them.
Yeah.
And to see if we can contact them, you know, and see how they felt about the thing. What I'm worried about is that we end up with something that doesn't work for us, even though it looks good on paper. And that's kind of hard to do in, you know, the middle of the North Pacific, so.
Okay, I can work on that.
Okay.
I know Ketchikan, I think, is using a company S something, SGR? Is that one of the companies you're looking at?
That is not one of the companies that I have contacted.
Well, I know CAT, because I talked to somebody in Ketchikan, they either just finished using them, or they're currently using them. But if he's, they're not in your list...
Well, if that's, I don't recognize that name. If you'd like to forward that information, I can look into it further.
I'll double check and make sure that's what it is, because you know me, I get things So going back to the calendar, do we want to, at this point, say we will take the 14th and 21st of July and cancel the meetings at this time? We can always have special meetings if we need to. Scott?
At this time, I think it sounds great. Move forward with that.
Scott Smiley?
I'm leery about doing that. It seems to me that we want to hit a home run on this search. And I think we need to know, you know, have a good, good idea of what we're getting from the advertising we're doing, and who we should turn to for a, they're not headhunters, what are they?
Executive search firms.
Executive search firms. And I don't know, maybe the clerk can broadcast all the clerks in Alaska and see if they've used an executive search firm. And we can see from that. But I think, I think we want to move on this. I think the opportunity for a special meeting on the, after the 7th is probably going to be required.
Well, we could do the special meeting, but we canceled the regular meetings. And the reason we do that is in number, we're going to take a break. Also, staff knows that all of a sudden, we're not going to say, oh, we're going to have a meeting, and we want to fill up our agenda on the 14th and the 6th and the 21st.
Oh, you're no fun.
James, did you have your hand up? Or Jared? Did I see somebody?
I did. I would, I would not suggest July, but I would suggest August, maybe. Postpone it into August, and then new, the 11th and the 18th, if we're going to, if we're talking about, you know, not having a meeting. Because then that gives us a work session and a regular meeting first part of September before we try and do something with the city. And then we can still search and get information on manager, HR services, those kind of things.
Scott, what do you think of that? Scott Arndt?
I think it's a good option. And staff doesn't have to feel that they have to fill the agenda up on the, on the 14th and 21st.
If there's nothing on the agenda, there's nothing on the agenda.
So I understand what James is saying. I can go either way on there.
And that would help with Scott Smiley wanting to move forward quickly on...
If the opportunity.
The head, excuse me, executive.
And that still might be a special meeting.
Yeah, it still might be. Jared, how do you feel on that?
No, I'm really good either, either way. I think James' suggestion about August works a little better for me professionally, because that's when the fall semester starts back up in August. So having a little time to focus on that would be nice, but...
Joe?
I think that works well with me as well.
Amy?
Super flexible. Either one of those is fine.
All right, let's, let's plan, and I don't know how we do this, Nova, but let's plan on those two meetings in August, the 11th and the 18th, are they?
Those are the ones we're canceling.
Yes. And then we'll continue with the meetings through July to August 4th. Okay, that takes us to Clerk's comments. Nova, you're up.
Okay, thank you. So I have provided in the packet the summer AML draft agenda. So if there's anyone who wished to travel, I believe that you need discussion on this.
We need discussion on traveling. I think the Assembly made the decision that somebody who wanted to travel on these meetings would come forward and put their name in, and travel would be done by the clerks. The travel arrangements would be done by the Clerk's office, and we'd approve it or disapprove it. But I think, how much money do we have in the account?
20,000.
James and Scott?
Well, I think that anybody on the Assembly that wants to travel, we put enough in there for the budget, except for Mr. Arndt. Well, I think that anybody on the Assembly that wants to travel, we put enough in there for the budget, except for Mr. Arndt.
I didn't want to say that in an open meeting, but thank you, James. Scott.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'd like to go to the summer conference on there, so I would be requesting approval for that to move forward. I think it's got to be done at the meeting this.
Let's go ahead and talk with the clerk to make the travel arrangements.
I think I need to get approval from the Assembly first at a regular meeting.
Yes. Well.
Before we do.
How did we do it last time?
Had to be approved at the Assembly level before it could do the travel.
I thought we did it at a work session, but we didn't. No.
No.
Okay.
Is that, is that still the direction that you want to take, put it on a regular meeting?
Yeah, put it under other items, and then we can take a vote. And for anybody in future travel to any of these meetings, make sure you get us, give us enough warning that we can. I think the reason we made it that way was sometime, the night before, somebody said, I want to go too, and, you know, that, that doesn't work.
Okay. And then, just an FYI, that the NEO AML and AAMC travel won't be until December this year. They moved it from November to December. And then I also provided to the code sections pertaining to mayor and assembly absences. So please make sure that you advise the clerk or the mayor of the contemplated absence and the reason. You need to give us the reason what, for your absence when you are taking time off.
So if I want to take off on the fourteenth, I should tell you now I'm going to have the flu? I'm kidding. Sorry.
Okay, and then I'm going to keep it short. I had a meeting on Tuesday with representatives from the Department of Justice, Section 203 regarding our compliance plan, and they're happy with what we put together. So we're moving forward on that. And then also, we've been busy this week destroying records that were submitted to you at the last meeting. We're all done with this year's destruction, unless we find more that are tucked away in the records room. And we also shredded quite a bit of documents. Sad to say that our shredder died on us, and we're going to have to look for a new shredder now, so. And they're pretty pricey. They're about three thousand, the professional crisscross cut ones are pretty pricey. So I am preparing the nominating packets, and I'm just awaiting for the final approval of the election code, so I, I can incorporate the new sections in the nominating packets. And I will have those available as soon as I can, and I will let you know once they're available. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to manager's report. Mr. Conrad.
So good evening, thank you. Couple of things. Happy July fourth, everybody. Remember that there are codes associated with fireworks. And better yet, let's be courteous to your fellow residents and be careful handling fireworks. Be safe and stay alert. KFRC public space containing the aquarium and touch tank are now open Thursdays and Fridays from eleven AM to four thirty PM for the immediate future. And there was a boatload of people today, and I anticipate there to be another one tomorrow, and no cruise ship was in town, but people certainly did come out. So people are pretty excited. I pity the poor starfish. That's all I can say. I'm, I, I don't know that we want to go through this entire report, and I apologize for not handing it out prior to tonight's meeting. I would like to go over some of the employee news. And Matt Gandell has turned in his resignation. Will be departing the island here at the end of the month, so we are advertising for a project manager at this time. Debbie Rippe retired recently with twenty-four years of service, and we want to make sure that, if you see Debbie, thank her for her dedication and her years of service, and both the IT department and assessing, and I've been here a long time, I didn't realize she worked for IT, so, at one point. And Mr. Michael Scarselli, new community development director, is scheduled to start employment on Tuesday, the fifth. And we will welcome him and assist him to get settled into the position that he was hired for. I went through and did some various items for each of the departments. I think notably, DORA is, DORA's department, they're working on actually a remote audit. So they're going through the audit process currently remotely, answering questions from the auditors themselves, and then there will be the actual unseen audit will be later in September. Of note to the public, tax bills will be sent out on the first of July. The first half payments are due on August fifteenth, 2022. The second half payments are due on November fifteenth, 2022. So that's maybe not the happiest of announcements, but I think the public needs to know. And I think I'm being interrupted.
Scott.
I would mention the October fifteenth single payment. If you don't make the first half, you have to pay by the fifteenth of October.
And I thank you for making that announcement. On the third page, I sat down with the directors over the last week and other staff, and I put a list of pending items for discussions. And these are items that are pending various departments that, quite frankly, haven't been dealt with. So I'd appreciate some feedback, and that way we can maybe look at prioritizing these and scheduling them for the next agenda setting. Obviously, for some July meetings at this point. And I did put a little blurb down there on, on the ARPA funding, but I think we have direction, and that's all I have for this evening, unless there's specific questions. Thank you.
Any specific questions? Scott Smiley.
I just want to say that Matt Gandell is a heck of a guy, and I think the borough really did well hiring him. He's been a breath of fresh air, as far as I'm concerned. So thanks for his service.
Any other comments? Scott.
I would, I would echo the same thing for Debbie Rippe also. I, I think it was unfortunate. I hadn't, didn't find out until after retirement party, so I was disappointed. I didn't know it was happening that quick. But twenty-four years' service is a long time for any location, so I thank her.
Any other comments? Okay. With that, we will move on to packet re- And in packet review, we have three public hearings. The first one is on a budget amendment, which is our typical end-of-the-year budget amendment, I'm assuming, to shuffle monies around?
Yes, that is correct.
Anything surprising in that?
This is the third time you've seen it. I do have one change from the previous time you've seen this. I got a call from the Chair, Menosha Bay Road Service. They have had the good fortune to have fair weather and attention from their contractor. So the work has progressed steadier than they had anticipated, so they want to raise their budget ask from an additional twenty-five to an additional sixty-five thousand. So I've changed theirs line item from twenty-five to sixty-five. Otherwise, there are no other changes from the previous time you've seen this. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions from the Assembly? Scott, Arndt.
I'm looking at my packet, and I, I don't see that it's been redlined out yet, so you just haven't got to modifying it. Okay, on mine, it says twenty-five, and I picked this up today, so.
There's a version to Scott in the packet, so I'll double check that.
Oh, it's on the other page. It's listed on the other page, but on page twenty-three of ninety-seven, it's not changed there, so. Budget increase. It should be both places. So I see it on one.
It should be on the one listed version, too. It should be
Okay.
highlighted and.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we.
Mr. Mayor, just to note that we're going to have to amend with version two at the next meeting.
Okay. Scott, did you hear that?
Yes. Done.
Thanks. That takes us to a public hearing on ordinance FY 202303, and that's the administrative code on personnel matters, amend the mayor, and assembly compensation. Any questions on that? Anybody not know what that's about? I think we can pass on that one and go on to the next one.
Bill, for the public, we should just go ahead and state it.
For the public, that's right. This is being livestreamed. What that does is it changes the mayor's compensation from five hundred a month to seven hundred, and the assembly from three hundred a month to five hundred. And I'll tell you that that doesn't even pay for the gas, so, but that's okay. We don't do this for a profit. The last public hea-, no, not the last public hearing. The next public hearing is ordinance FY 202304, mending various sections of the code on personnel to, to appointments of borough employees to boards, committees, and commissions. It would be if you are an active employee, you can't be appointed to a board, commission, or a committee. You can still be elected to one of the boards that are out there, like the service district board, or fire board, or that. Any questions on that one from the Assembly? And that brings us to the last public hearing, which is ordinance number FY 202305, amending the Kodiak Island Borough Code of Ordinances Title VII Elections. Nova.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have provided to a table that shows what has changed. These are the sections that were brought to my attention at the last, or the first review that we had. So I addressed those, and there's two that I didn't make changes on, and those are pages one oh three, one oh eight in the version one, and nine oh eight to nine oh nine pertaining to the election pamphlet. If you want to change those, you may make the motion at the meeting, unless you want to discuss those sections. And if there's clear direction from the Assembly that you want those changed, I'd be happy to take that direction and draft substitutions. If you would like me to go on, you know, I, if you want me to go into the detail of what's in this document, I can do that.
Okay, so version two is what was introduced?
Version one is what we reviewed at the two-night work session.
And version two.
And then I, the version two is what I, what we introduced at the last meeting. So what is going to be advanced to public hearings, version two.
Okay. Comments? Everybody good with that? Okay.
Oh, that's easy. Thank you.
Where's my little dot thing? Oh, there you are.
Just a note also, I reached out to the cities and the villages. I sent them an email. I sent them a copy of our ordinance, and I sent them a copy of the resolution that will be presented to you at the later part of our meeting, just so they can provide us feedback about these changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to other items, contracts. Contract FY 202301 approving the animal control contract with the City of Kodiak for 2022 and 2023. Staff report, please.
So the contract that the city sent over is different from the budget amount that you guys okayed. I did put in your packet the City of Kodiak's 2023 operating budget, and I believe that you guys had asked for before, the number of calls, and I put that on an Excel spreadsheet for you, which is in your packet also. So the difference in the dollar amount is, we had originally budgeted a hundred and twenty-six thousand, but the contract is actually for a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, I think, the first year. Sorry. I should have had that right up. Oh, and then it increases the second year of the contract. So we'd have to make a budget amendment for that also.
Scott, Arndt.
Yeah, I was, I was going, going over this. We would have to address it as a budget amendment later, when DORA presents one at the end of the first quarter or something like that. One of the things that, in going over their, their, their budget for 2022 and for 2021, we were underpaying our half. So I don't have a problem with, with this, this increase at this time as I, as I look at the their operating budget here. Evidently, some miscalculations were done, or they did something different. But we've gotten a break the last two years, the way I read it. Seema's got it.
So the only thing that I saw on that budget was underneath the salaries and all of that stuff, it says professional services. And that was the only question that I was going to take back to the city manager, was like, what's the difference between professional services, which is a budget line item for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, or, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars this year, and the salary? So otherwise, looking at that budget that they gave us, it was pretty clear that.
That was the only question I had in it, too. I didn't understand whether they've contracted out and they've transferred things over there. I don't know. But I wouldn't mind knowing the answer to that, but as far as what it's, what they've been paying and what we've been paying, we've been underpaying for the last two years, as far as our share goes on there, so. And then you can look at the, the calls and see they're dispersed fairly evenly, between some lower, some higher, so. Looks, looks all right. Thank you.
Does any of you remember the time that the Assembly decided to save money and not do animal control?
Yes.
We, I know you do. Were you on the Assembly at that time? Wow. They couldn't backtrack.
Save money.
They couldn't backtrack fast enough. So this is a deal, to not have to hire our own and be able to do this. And if you look at the calls, it's not like we're getting shortchanged. Any other questions? Scott?
Bill, along that same line, it, basically, we're entering into a two-year agreement. If we were going to do something different, it would take us time to gear up. So if somebody can bring up, you know, is willing to do something and contract cheaper, I'm, I'm willing to take a look at it. But at this time, it's going to be two years before somebody could do that anyway, so that's where this fills the gap. And we got stability and no one will pay.
Not only do you have to have personnel, but you have to have equipment. And then you have to have a dispatch that, that can reach you at any time of night, because some of those calls come out in the middle of the night. I think it's a good deal, but that's me. Okay, moving on. Contract number FY 202302 with Discover Kodiak to provide tourism and marketing development services in fiscal year 2023.
I have a conflict, that's my day job. Would you like me to leave while you discuss it?
No, absolutely not. If we approve this contract, are you going to get money above and beyond your salary?
I could only dream. No.
Our, our conflict of interest rules are very, very specific. It's if you are going to personally make money. That doesn't mean that you're going to, you're working for a company, and if the company gets the grant or the contract, that you're going to get paid with it. gonna get paid whether they get the contract or not. Unless, of course, Discover Kodiak goes away. Do we have a staff report on that?
This is your annual contract with Discover Kodiak. The amount of the contract is the amount that was budgeted in tourism development, because I did not hear of any other uses for that money, and made the assumption that it was all going to Discover Kodiak. But other than that, the director—just can't talk, sorry. The director and I both reviewed the contract and agreed that there were no need for any changes, and are bringing it forward for approval.
Any questions? Scott Arndt.
No questions, just a comment. I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Anybody else? We'll move on. Resolution FY 2023-05, a resolution of Kodiak Island Borough Assembly appointing a member of the joint seat on the Kodiak Fisheries Development Association's Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have quite a few seats on this board that need to be filled. We reached out to Mr. Anderson, and he's willing to be appointed to the joint seat. And of course, we have this on the agenda. You've—you haven't had an opportunity to meet with the city of Kodiak to discuss this item, but in the past, we've—I've shared it with the city of Kodiak, letting them know that Mr.—Mr. Anderson is interested. So this resolution before you is for you to approve it, and then it is subject to approval of the city council as well. And we thank Mr. Anderson for his continued interest to serve. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Brings us to resolution FY 2023-06, allocating fiscal year 2023 Kodiak Island Borough nonprofit funding, and that's what we just spent a long time on, and we decided we'll put forward James's version and then make amendments and vote them up or down. And that brings us to resolution FY 2023-07, designating precincts where the voter turnout was less than 75 voters at the last regular elections.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the ordinance is before you, and once that's—that's adopted, the code states that you have to do this resolution to designate those precincts. So I presented it to you so I can start moving forward with the work that I need to do for elections. It's really up to you. It's subject to your adoption of this resolution. And this is one of the—the documents that I forwarded to the cities and villages.
James.
I saw that email. Thank you very much for doing that. Did anybody respond?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And we will move on to other items. Approval of a transportation agreement to reimburse relocation expenses of the newly-hired community development director. Mr.—no, Megan.
The personnel rules and regulations allow for reimbursement of relocation expenses for positions deemed difficult to recruit for. Manager Murphy offered to hire Mr. Scarselli into the community development director position, and part of the conversations between the two of them included this provision of the personnel rules and regulations to be reimbursed for basically moving expenses up to an amount equal to one month's salary.
Okay. Is there anything else we should know? We have a copy. That is lawyer-client privilege, and it appears to be the application.
I—I'm not sure why that's here, other than for information for the assembly. It's the application and resume for a review, so people can see what we're getting, so to speak.
Comments from the assembly? Scott Smiley.
A one-month moving expense seems reasonable to me.
If I could interrupt for just a moment, Nova reminded me that I provided a copy of the application, because in the past, when I brought a matter such as this in front of the assembly, there was an interest in knowing the qualifications and experience of the applicant.
Okay. That explains that. Thank you. And don't forget to turn these back in when you're done to the clerk. Any other questions? Comments? We usually do pay for transportation costs for some positions and definitely for department heads, so there are other issues there, but we won't go into them right now. That brings us to other items, discussion and approval of a percentage increase for the existing service area contractors operating on month-to-month extensions. Dave.
So I apologize for not having this to you prior. It's been quite a week, quite frankly. However, this goes back quite a few years. We have contracts that are in place that are working month-to-month since 2014. Through the various managers that I've worked with, it seems that every time we seem to work on a service area contract, we are directed elsewhere, that this is less important. I do believe it's important. Why this is before you is some of these contractors have not received any type of substantive increase. So what we're suggesting—and there's a—there's a table on the back here that Matt Gandell put together, and that is basically your inflation rates. So, you know, you can look at the averages, but effectively, we're talking about proposing a 15% increase for the ser—for the service area contractors. I think this is fair. I also think that the—what's on the front that says standard specifications for local road maintenance, this was borrowed, air quotes, from Fairbanks North Star Borough, who has, I believe, over 130 different service areas. So why we're required to have a change is that the Department of Labor has changed the way they look at service area contracts, to where there's distinct labor rates between what they consider to be maintenance and repair. So maintenance is grading a road. Maintenance is plowing snow. But as soon as you put additional or new material onto a road, you replace a culvert, that is repair. They've also set a limit of $25,000 to an annual contract, or—or even a long-term contract. So consequently, what—what they—this is my understanding, is that what they are looking at is that they would prefer to have a service area prebid the work that they plan for the following year. Now, I need clarification on this. I—I've sporadically touched this over the years, and I don't have clarity. However, I have spoken to our attorney, and he is familiar with this. So I don't think this is a—we can't do it. I think that we're with reduction of staff because of folks resigning, that we may need to get a little help. Matt and I have worked on this several times. I think it's just a matter of getting our hands around it and getting a contract out. I think we can do single contracts for each of the service districts. However, what we're here to discuss tonight is a potential increase. In all fairness, I know Service Area One, Mr. Arndt and I have discussed this, and Mr. Arndt has—he's been the stimulus to get this to the service—to the—to the assembly, and I—I concur. However, I think that in all fairness, the EF department needs to call in the other service areas and have specific conversations, because if we retroactively do this, some of the service areas will be in the hole. They will not have the money to go back and pay this. So we have to at least have a conversation with them, because the last thing we wanna do is force them to deplete any fund balance that—the unreserved fund balance that they
Thank you, Dave, for that lead-in. Very well done. As Dave said, we've been working on this over the course of the last year, started with Manager Powers, and then it ended with Manager Murphy, and wasn't able to get anything moving, so since was having trouble. Basically, and David can speak to what he had told Service District One contractor, which is Aim Maintenance, the owner being Jeremy Williams, that we were working to get an increase for the current fiscal year that ends today. And after a full year, we haven't got that. And so what—what I did was ask the contractor to go back through all the billings and calculate, because we pay a markup on materials, is calculate what the labor and equipment end was—that was left on a monthly basis, and charge us through May for Service District One. I think that's roughly—through May was roughly $35,000. Part of—the part of my discussion with the contractor over the course of the last year is, when—when can we get this? Because he had predicated staying on board with the contract on getting that increase, because his costs have all gone up. 15% was what had calculated through June of 2021. So the—the increase for fiscal year 2022, that ends today, amounted to 15%. And so that's what we did. Now, we—I can't speak for all the service districts, but Service District One being one of the largest, we have the money to pay for that. And we—I took it before the board, and the board unanimously approved it. So that's why we're—we're here tonight. I—I too agree that all the service districts needed to be involved, but we weren't able to get that out of the managers. That was the problem. And that was part of what was going on behind the scenes. Kept trying with two managers. So I'm willing to answer any questions, but—and it—it varies, as you can see, it varies a little bit from service district to service district on there. But one of the oldest—oldest contracts is Service District One. So that's where we're at right now.
Dave.
So I have discussed this with Brecken. They have called and asked basically the same thing, and—and Brecken was to the point where, you know, with the relationship that we've had over the years, that I've had with the principals of Brecken, they were willing to wait until this came before. But they're also ready that if this doesn't go through, to notify the borough that 30 days is what's required in the contract, to notify the borough that they will no longer perform the services. The other thing you gotta realize is fuel prices have gone up a wee tad in the last couple of months. And we're talking about diesel fuel for what these guys are accomplishing. I think this is at—a—you know, I'm gonna say this is at least a minimal effort to increase. But once again, I will go Tuesday night—I believe there is a Women's Bay service area meeting, and I will make sure that we contact the other two service meetings and have a meet—the districts, excuse me, and have a conversation at a minimum with their chairs, and offer to have a special meeting if they choose to.
So you're planning on bringing a resolution forward next week?
I—I don't know that we can get this before the other boards that fast and get a—get an agreement. And then the other thing is, what do we do if they don't have this 15%? So that's something we need to discuss or—or consider. I'm—I believe that Women's Bay is just about maxed with the—with their fun-runners' or fund balance with the amount of money they've requested through the end of the year. It's the end of the year. I don't know how much they've spent. They're not gonna know how much they spent until they're invoiced.
Can we do this in increments, service district by service district?
We could potentially do that. Yes, we could.
If the Service District One has already taken it before the board and approved it, could we have a resolution to do it for them and then move forward with the other—
As they come.
Yeah, as they come.
Well, we can certainly put that before you and see if we have to tweak it and use them as the guinea pig, so to speak.
Yeah.
Does it need to be a resolution, or is it an action of the assembly?
I don't have that answer.
Just wondering if it needs to be a resolution.
It—it's an expenditure of funds. I think maybe we'll talk to Dora. Dora—Dora has been out with a horrific headache. I—I really appreciate her being here tonight, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott Smiley.
The way inflation's going right now, you're gonna need a good projection for going into the future on this. If you're just trying to put a Band-Aid on what happened in the past, ending in FY 22, then the 15% will probably work, but I think you're gonna be asking for more than that. And I'm not quite sure where the funding is gonna come from that—for that. Have they lost revenue themselves, and is ARPA a possibility, is one question. That 1.9 from the state, we had talked about 1.625 go into the landfill, and an additional 30,000 going somewhere else—I don't remember where, but that leaves approximately 250, 225 behind, which we might be able to use temporarily to sustain these guys. But I—you're gonna have to come up with an agreement that says last year's cost of living increase is what you're gonna have to live with this year.
The unfortunate part is that when we look at the contract, because of the way the Department of Labor is now interpreting this, ultimately, what's going to happen reality-wise—again, this is my opinion—is that you are going to pay more for less service, is what it comes down to, especially if you have to contract, because now you're involving the borough staff by having to put out RFPs. So I—I understand what they're trying to do, but I'm not sure—the negative consequences are gonna have a negative result, and what's gonna have to happen is a consideration of raising mill rates, which is really unfortunate. I don't believe there's been lost revenue, because this is standard tax based on your mill rate, so I don't know how there would have been a lost revenue, because there wasn't like a giant migration out of these service areas.
Oh, well.
Scott Arndt.
Yeah, I agree with Dave. There is no lost revenue. They received every bit of tax dollar that they submitted for. So—so there is no lost revenue, so that's not an opportunity there, the way I interpret it.
Dave.
The—the other thing I say—I'm gonna say is that, you know, ha—having been involved with service areas for as long as I was, some years you win and some years you lose. And unfortunately, there's been several years in a row, and you just flat lost. And you—you know, you never—what—I hate about this contract is that if there's a disaster, or there's a flood on Sergeant Creek Road three, four times a year that you hadn't expended money on for 15 years prior, well, there you go. You wiped out your fund balance. So—and I think that's truly what's happening with some of these service areas. I know the smaller service areas do a really good job at managing a very small amount of money, which is why you get the complaints that you get, because they don't go out and gravel every time someone thinks it's slippery, you know? And—and unfortunately, sometimes, public safety may come into that realm. So it's—it's this is a hard thing, and I—I really—I wish I wasn't involved in it, because it's gonna put a hurt on some people.
Any other comments? I don't know why they have to mess with it, but there's no accounting for government, right? Oh, wait, we are government. All right, that takes us, wraps us up for the packet review. And we'll come down to assembly members' comments. I believe it's your turn to start, James.
No comment tonight. Thank you.
Joe?
I have no comment either. Thank you.
Jared?
I just want to say thanks for your feedback with the consolidation questions and thanks to James for taking a point on that. We will take that back to the committee and then report back to you guys. And I also want to say thanks to Matt and Debbie for their years with the borough. They definitely will be missed. Happy Fourth of July weekend.
Scott?
My dog is cowering under the bed because of explosions all around. And there doesn't seem to be anything to do about it. My wife told me that I had to bring this up at the Borough Assembly meeting and told me if I didn't, I'd be in trouble, but she's in Vermont, so I can kind of skate a little. But the dog is so pathetic under these conditions. And it would be great if we could limit the explosions to a day or two around the Fourth of July or a day or two around New Year's. But no, it goes on for a week beforehand and there doesn't seem to be anything we can do about it. I find that frustrating and sad for my dog.
Scott? All right.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everybody happy Fourth of July out there. And another issue that, I'm going to bring it up here. It has to do with Dave Conrad did not get his step increase this year. And the reasons that were given for not doing it are inadequate, as far as I'm concerned. It was based upon a number of hours there. So he doesn't have anyone to really ask. So it's the assembly that needs, at some time as he goes back in, progresses, because he comes in and out, in and out. And right now, he's the acting manager. But when he goes back to the facilities and engineering director, this needs to be cleaned up. And so I would like to see, I'm not sure of the exact procedure, but I'm bringing it up so we can look, figure out what we need to do and get it done. That's all I got. Thank you.
Second. Amy?
Third. So happy Fourth of July to everyone. I just wanted to take a second and thank Dave for stepping up into this assistant manager role yet again. It's only been a little over six months and I felt very bad last time. I feel a little less bad this time because I think you know what you're getting yourself into. But in respect to Dave's pay, when he took it the last time, the rate of pay that he was getting was higher because Manager Powers was making more money. And so unless the assembly highly ejects, I'd like to make sure that he goes back in back in at that same level of pay as he did the last time instead of what would be the compensation that Manager Murphy was making, which wasn't as high. I'd like to see him go back to at least that same pay. And Scott's always telling my thunder, I was going to talk about a special merit increase or just make sure that he gets compensated. I think two weeks after open heart surgery, I was on the phone with Dave in Pennsylvania and he was working from Pennsylvania. So to look at his actual hours that he might have been in the building is an unfair way to talk about how much work he put in because that's assuming that he works a nine-to-five job, which we all know he doesn't every time. His beeper goes off and all the other things that are happening. So very much interested in making sure that he's compensated in the way that he should be because he has just been there for the borough in ways that he and we had no idea was going to happen. So Dave, thank you. And then just thanks to Matt Gandell. He's been a rock star through stepping up into your job when you were in this job and making sure that facilities is taken care of. And he's just been an exceptional project manager and wish him luck as he moves on to his new job. And that's it. Have a great weekend.
That brings us to Mayor's comments. And if we can convince Matt Gandell to stay, we might be able to convince Dave Conrad to end our search for a new manager, if it's our desire. By the way, one of the ways to fix that, Scott, we've got to go to the personnel manager and that comes out, Personnel Manual, it says that you have to work so many hours. But department heads don't work just 40 hours a week. Their exam. And I think it was pretty low that they didn't give that to Dave and we need to find a way to fix it. I guarantee you that that needs to be done. With that, I'm just going to say thank you very much to Matt, by the way. And if you're listening, can you rethink leaving one time? Thank you for your service and definitely Debbie, thank you for your 24 years. You've been a stellar employee here and I was happy to work with you for eight of those 24 years. And with that, everybody have a happy and safe and sane Fourth of July.